Okay, we're set over here. Okay, hi, my name is Ralph Thomaselli. I'm the editor of the Record Journal and I want to welcome you to tonight's candidate forum, which is cosponsored by the Record Journal and the Midstate Chamber of Commerce. I would also like to thank Washington Middle School and the Board of Education for letting us use the building tonight. We will have three sessions tonight with very short breaks hopefully in between. One session for the Merrill candidates, one session for the at-large candidates, and one session for the area races. And actually, the area races will come next. I went out a little out of order there. We're expecting to go about two and a half hours. We're going to try to keep the time limits to what they are, start on time. The candidates have times. We'll do our best to keep that enforced. And we will have a slightly different format for each group and I'll go over that before we start. I already did go over it with the Merrill candidates. The questions tonight will be asked by Record Journal editorial page editor Jeff Kurz and then, of course, our City Hall reporter Matt Zeiberg. And we have, probably the most important job tonight is Devin Leath Yesian, who is helping us keep time. Okay, so we'll begin with the candidates for mayor. And this is scheduled for 30 minutes. Each candidate will get 90 seconds when they're asked a question directly. How am I, are you all hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Better now? Was I too far away from the mic before? No? Okay. I can be loud sometimes, so I want to guard against that. Okay. What I was saying was each candidate will get 90 seconds to respond to a direct question and then the other candidate would get 30 seconds to rebut. Okay? And I think that's it. And if things go smoothly, and I'm sure they will, we'll have one minute closing statements as long as we have time. Okay? All right, now I want to introduce the candidates. First, we have Kevin Scarpatti, who is unaffiliated endorsed by the Democratic and We the People Parties. Okay, and we have Ernestine Holloway, who is a petitioning candidate. Okay, so with that, I will let Matt or Jeff take it away.
I'm going to start out with a very general and open-ended question in hopes that you will fill in the blanks, which is, what do you consider Meriden's strengths and what do you consider Meriden's weaknesses?
Kevin is going to go first, yes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. First of all, thank you everyone for coming tonight. Special thanks to the Meriden Record Journal for allowing us to come out here this evening to just kind of voice our platforms and fill you in on why we all believe, all the candidates believe, we are best suited for office. I've stated for many years that I believe Meriden's greatest strength are the people who make up Meriden, our very diverse population. All 60-plus thousand of our residents come from all sorts of different backgrounds, both racially, ethnically, and we have a greatly diverse population. And so, I would start by saying I believe that's our greatest strength. I think we see it in our school systems and that's what contributes to the betterment and the success here in our schools. Our challenges, I think, are things that we see on a daily basis and we hear about, whether it's through the paper, albeit, I think, public safety has been an issue that we have been confronted with and faced with over the last several years. In particular, this year, we have noticed an increase in gun violence. So that's certainly one of our challenges. And I think it almost goes hand in hand with another one of our challenges and that's economic development. And that's driving business and growing business in our city, something that we answer the question, how do we improve ourselves in those fields? Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. I'd like to thank the Record Journal and all you fine people that should show up at the city council meetings. Thank you for coming out and supporting this mayor race. What I'm going to say is this, our strength are the ability to stay in this town even though the mill rate is sky-high and half of us can't afford it. But we manage every day to stick around and work for the betterment of the town. Our greatest assets are our children, who we, me as a candidate, want to make it better so then when we all gone, that they'll have a place to live and can afford it.
Okay, that's time. Okay, the next question is for, and I guess the way this is going to work, sorry folks. Devin, they're going to get a minute 30 seconds no matter what, right? And then we're counting back the 30 seconds, is that what it is?
Sir, the first question is in the end and the answer is four seconds.
But the screen is showing a minute 30 on each one, just so we can keep track. Okay. All right, we'll try it. All right, the next question is for Ernestine.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So I want to build off of something Kevin touched on, which is, what should the city do to address the recent spike in shootings, both to make the city more safe and make residents feel more safe?
Well, it starts with how we police the area. I think we have to do a little bit better with community policing. The way that they have it set up now, it works half, but it can work better. I believe that they should sign, assign officers to that, to a certain area. We need to bring the police officers back on the beat, where they walked around, not always in a car, so that they're visible and people can see them. And parents are the key. Keep an eye out. Watch what your children are doing. Don't be afraid to say, you in my neighborhood, you don't belong here, that's not happening here. It takes us both to work together. The police can't do it by itself. We need to work together as a team.
Okay, Kevin?
So, it's something that's plagued our community all too frequently. And one thing that I have fought for is the re-establishment of our neighborhood initiative unit, those community police officers, our school resource officers who should be present in our schools. But it's not just a local issue. We need to work with our state officials to make sure that we are expediting arrest warrants, that the judge is not decreasing a bond to let people out of jail that much earlier and keep those repeat offenders locked up behind bars.
Okay. We have a question for Ernestine. I'm sorry, no, it's back to Kevin. I'm sorry, you guys know, go ahead.
She doesn't get 30 seconds?
Oh.
Yes.
No, Kevin was the rebutter. Okay, so now...
Well, anyway, well, in any case, we'll get...
The question goes to Kevin now.
The question goes to Kevin.
Yeah.
Okay. Following up Kevin on the...
Did I say something funny?
On shootings and the perception of safety, these are all sort of entwined concerns here when it comes to Meriden. And we just went through in the last year, because of budget constraints or however you want to interpret it, the problem with school resource officers being cut. They were cut, they were restored. The neighborhood initiative units, similar thing happened in those cases. How would you, what would you say to people who are uneasy about whether such programs, which in the past have proven very effective, at least in terms of making people feel safer, that these kind of things are going to be taken away from them just because of budget reasons? I mean, what kind of assurance can you give to people?
Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, there isn't much assurance I can give them as to the stability of these programs. Now, these are proactive assignments that unfortunately, when our police department faces very deep cuts, upwards of 200, 300, 400, and $500,000 in cuts, we need to work with the chief to determine where those cuts are made. But I would back up to the beginning as to why the money is being cut. And this was something we, you know, myself and members of the city council who are here had heated discussion many a time as to what the appropriate level of funding should be, specifically with this question, to our police department. I don't think we are in a time where we can afford cutting back on public safety. I don't think we should be putting our neighborhoods at risk and take a gamble as to whether or not someone's safety is worth the extra $200,000 that we should be able to find elsewhere in our budget. We need to look at our priorities at the top and determine what we feel is in the city's best interest. And it's always been my feeling that public safety should fall at the very top of our list as to what needs to be funded properly, what programs should be instated and kept in our communities so that people do feel safe. Community policing is a real thing, that people can call upon an officer in a time of need and they build that relationship, and that is very, very important.
This is where me and the mayor disagree. The police chief is giving a budget. He has a whole bunch of money that the taxpayers give to him. And it's his duty to do what's right by the community and not scare them. He cut his own budget. So if he thought community policing was important, he would not have cut them. He could have found other areas. He didn't have that problem when it came to him retiring, digging into their budget, trying to find that money. So why couldn't he find that money for the Neighborhood Initiative?
Okay. Okay. Okay, I should have, I should have mentioned, I also have some questions here from the public and from the Midstate Chamber of Commerce. And I was going to try a question out here. Does that sound okay? Okay. This is for Ernestine. What are your opinions on city incentives to recruit and retain, excuse me, growing businesses?
I think that incentives are very nice, but we don't have to give away the city. I'll use an example, knocking down the mills. Somebody wanted to buy it, $30 million. We didn't sell it to them. That would have been enough money to maintain us in taxes and not raise the realma, the mill rate. We had the money. So then we go pay somebody from out of town, give them 80% off, a discount. We only gained 20% in taxes from them. We can build without giving away our city. I think it's, it's a shame. We can fix the water, that'll bring them. Clean up downtown, that'll bring them. Who's going to run a business downtown when the drunks are meeting you there? Panhandlers are meeting you there. These are things that we can clean up to make our community effective and make people want to live down there. You know, move their business down there. Open homes, you know, mom-and-pop businesses. If we don't, as a city, clean it up, I don't care what incentives we offer, they're not going to come. We bear the responsibility.
So I don't think we have enough incentives out there to bring business in. It's, as I mentioned, one of our biggest challenges that we face. We have some assistance to bring people in, we can help with moving, we of course have tax abatements in certain areas of our city. I would beg to differ that they do work. We have only seen the development on East Main Street, for example, something very tangible, something very real, that has only worked because of the incentives we've given those business owners to open. And I would say 20% of something is better than 0% of nothing.
Okay. Go ahead, we can ask a question to Kevin.
For the first time in several years, the city was able to lower its mill rate in this budget in large part by using some of the Eversource money to offset spending. However, that money won't be available in this upcoming budget process. So what, if anything, should the city look at to trim its spending? And please be as specific as possible.
Sure. So, yes, we're proud of the fact that we lowered the mill rate this year. However, as you mentioned, that was pretty much in lieu of the fact that we had $3.4 million come through Eversource after we had under-assessed their property. Fortunately, Eversource recognized that, realized that, and worked with us instead of against us. And so, you know, we can't always look to cut our way out of problems. I think we need to be realistic and say, we need to do our best at watching our purse strings and reeling in expenses wherever we can. But we also need to find ways to raise revenues. We need to find ways to drive economic development, to increase our tax base on the commercial side so that our residential homeowners that are out in our audience tonight aren't the ones that are solely bearing the burden of a tax increase. I think some of the things we have done as a council and, you know, as mayor, is look creatively to find how we can invest for future. And so that the Eversource funds aren't going to one-time projects, they're going to investments in our future, so that we don't bear that burden year over year. And so that it's not just necessarily a one-time increase. So for example, what we just did this past Monday, instead of using $1.7 million surplus that we had to go towards special projects, we reinvested that into two areas. One going into our rainy day fund and two going into our health fund to help offset that going forward.
Well, this is where me and the mayor really disagree, because we had a referendum and people worked hard. And they said they wanted cuts. So we work for the people. So we need to do what they ask. We may have not raised the mill rate like he said, but we spent 7% higher than we normally spent. We prepaid for things next year, so you'd think the taxes are lowered, but they aren't. It's just that we bought stuff early. Stop with the smoking screens and cut the taxes like the referendum said. The people have spoken.
Okay. So the next question is for Ernestine Holloway.
Well, I guess what I'd like to do is follow up on what you just said. And I get it that, that everybody wants their taxes lowered. But what specifically would you cut in the city budget in order to bring taxes down?
First of all, turn out all them lights that we have on all night long. Why is a school burning all night long and nobody's in it? That'll cut down on Eversource. We don't have to give them that much money. Number two, what we have to do is say, yes, you can come in here, we'll bring you in, but we don't have to give away our whole, our whole house. You know, what we can do is open up the mom-and-pop shops. Train people in our community to go into entrepreneurship, instead of going outside of the community. You know, we have people that own businesses, that live here, that can't operate their business here because they can't afford the taxes. So why not give them the same incentive that you give big business? That way, we know the people in our community and we don't mind supporting them. But we have to give them the support that they need also. And not open up these new buildings. We're just taking houses, taking them off the tax market. No, now, don't do that. We got enough buildings going to Meriden Housing Authority. We don't need to give them no more. Let them work with what we got. We studied building, but nobody is coming in. So how does that work? You got a glass and you want coffee and there's nothing in there. You won't have coffee, you'll just have air. So that's what they've been selling us, a bunch of hot air. Let's go back to the table. We don't need a banquet hall. We need big business and we need mom-and-pop shops to come in and let them know that we embrace them.
One thing we saw this year was a large turnover in city staff. We offered a retirement incentive program where nearly 10% of the workforce, almost 60 people who had worked for the city for decades, had retired. In turn, we were able to fill some of those positions and many of them at a much lower salary than the person that was there previously. I think we need to continue to look for efficiencies in government and not necessarily fill every single position that either retired or left, but figure out how to operate more efficiently in government.
Okay, the next question is going to be for Kevin Scarpatti.
Yeah, let's stay on the retirement incentive program. And I'm just curious, do you think that passing that was a mistake at all, given how much experience, institutional knowledge the city lost with the 58 employees who retired? And the fact that some of those employees needed to be brought back on a part-time basis because the city couldn't fill their positions fast enough?
Sure. So I think that's, that's an interesting question, because I certainly was not in favor of a retirement incentive that requested and required people to retire at June 30th, but then at the same time, we allowed many of those individuals to come back and work after the 1st of July for several weeks, several months. Some are still working in city government as we speak today. Do I think it was a mistake? No, I don't think it was a mistake. Do I think we were ready for it, would be the question? I don't think we were ready for it. I don't think that city staff, we had a turnover in our HR department. We had a lot of turnover recently, exclusive of the retirement incentive, of department heads. And with all new department heads coming on board, not necessarily knowing their roles and responsibilities solely as department heads, with experienced veteran staff or without, they were faced with a much larger challenge than I think we anticipated. So I think we could have been more prepared for it, we could have taken more time with it, but I don't believe it was overall a mistake.
I disagree. I think that they knew, the city manager knew what he had planned, it was their plan. They decided this is what they was going to do, along with the police chief. It didn't make sense to me that he retired and yet we brought him back. You knew six months to a year that he was going to retire. And we know that, because if you look back into the, into the videos, you will see. They went into everybody's pension, so they had a secret meeting. So they knew that they, he was going to retire. So they had time to find somebody else.
The next question is going to be for Ernestine, and I think I'm going to ask it, if that's okay. Ernestine, you've brought up the current police chief twice so far. And as you know, the city will be selecting a new police chief. Can you tell me the qualities you'd like to see in the next chief?
I would like him to be able to be transparent and not have any secrets. I'd like for the community to be part of picking a police chief, so that they can get to know him, to see if he fits this town. Just because you're a police chief does not mean that you fit Meriden, or vice versa. You know, this is something that I find offensive, that you go and make major decisions and don't involve us. It is our tax dollars, it's our money. I also think that he shouldn't own homes in Meriden. I think that the only home that he should own is his own. You know, I think that him, being the police chief we have now, he had a lot of water underneath the bridge. And we don't need one that have water underneath the bridge. We want the water to stay where it's supposed to be and not murky. I also think that he needs to be able to walk the community, not just stay in the office. He needs to be visible. He needs to have, be able to lift the morale of the people and the police department. You know, that friendly atmosphere for yet tell you, if you break the law, you're still going to jail. So there has to be a balance, something that we haven't had.
So, I'll just touch upon something really briefly, the fact that we knew the chief was going to retire six months to a year from now is false. The chief actually was eligible to retire at 60, or needs to retire at 65. So our current chief has another five to seven years before he needed to retire. But words I've written down for a new chief, transparent, involved, visible, in touch with the community, experienced, and boosting morale as Ernestine said, boosting morale not just within our community, but also within our police department.
Okay. The next question is going to be for Kevin, and I think I'm going to stay on this thread, if that's all right, guys. Because this question is for Kevin. And Kevin, yeah, we'll have a new police chief in about a year, but the current chief will be there for a while longer. And one of our greatest frustrations at the Record Journal is getting information on shootings, stabbings, fatalities. I mean, we've had cases where murders weren't publicly discussed for days. You've expressed frustration about that, other counselors have. I know there's been some efforts, there's been some meetings, public safety meetings, to try to get information out there. Is there anything else the mayor can do to try to get important public information on crimes out quicker?
Sure. So it's not just frustrating to the Record Journal, this solely is not an issue that the Record Journal has with lack of information getting to them. I think you'll hear from some city counselors who are frustrated not getting the information quickly. And of course, members of the public. If something happens down the street from your house, next door to your house, in your backyard, you should know what is happening. We owe it to you, because that's who we ultimately answer to. It's one of my biggest frustrations as well, that as the mayor of the city, you need to go and ask several hours later, well, hey, where's the press release on this? To find out that if you hadn't raised the question, there wasn't going to be a press release sent. So it needs to be relayed to the existing chief, who's going to be here through June 30th of next year, as well as to anyone coming on board, that as much information that can be shared, should be shared with the public, with the Record Journal, with elected officials. Obviously, a lot of this is ongoing information or ongoing investigations and sensitive information that we can't always release, but we should try and be as transparent as possible to let you know that if it's truly an isolated incident, what that means being an isolated incident. And that a lot of the shootings that have occurred in our city, we believe to be related to one another. And so it goes back to what I stated earlier by locking these people up sooner.
Well, I, this is my thing.
Okay, Ernestine, go ahead.
This is my thing. We hired the police chief. The city council hired him. So you mean to tell me we hired somebody that we can't get information from? So that means he should have been reprimanded. You don't get to tell the city council what you want to tell them about what's going on in our town. This is something that we hired you for. And if you can't do your job, you need to be relieved of your duties. I don't understand that. If I hire you, we can let you go. We did it with the city manager, we could do it then.
Okay. The next question will be for Ernestine. Go ahead, guys.
Did the city council make the right decision choosing not to approve $9.3 million for renovation and expansion of the library, instead approving, I believe it was $7.8 million for a renovation only?
I didn't hear that. You kind of mumbled a little bit. Can you repeat that?
Okay, we'll ask again.
So, did the city council make the right decision by not approving the expansion and renovation of the library, instead only going with the renovation?
I don't think they should have got that much. I think that when they got money, the library, they renovated. They knew that the library had all these defects. What they should have said was, we don't want to renovate, we want a new library. You can't take the money and then come back a year and a half later, if I'm not, if I'm correct with the time, and say, well, we don't want that building anymore, we just want a new one. No, you stick with the one that you just renovated. It's the taxpayers' money. And it wasn't the city council really's decision, it was the people. The people were ready to fight. They did not want a $9.3 million library. They did not want a break room, because they wasn't going to be selling coffee for $2 million. That makes no sense, it's ludicrous. We are not New York, we are not a big city that we need that done. We didn't have the money. We should have did a lot, a lot better with that. No, they shouldn't have got a penny. They should have just waited around and got money when it came around again. I'm sorry, I love the library, but not $9.3 million worth.
So, I said at a council when, when this was passed, I felt it was a mistake to approve the lesser of the options that were in front of us. I think if we're going to do something and you're going to invest in this larger project, you should do it right the first time. Because I truly do believe, for those of us who will be around 30, 40 years from now, will likely regret the decision that was made. We heard from the people, we heard from over 2,000 people who took a public survey that said, here's what I want, I want an increased children's center, I want a teen, an area for our teens, I want more technology in our library.
Okay. Yes, right, we're going to go to a question for Kevin, and then we're going to do, just to give, is Kevin up next? Did I get, yeah, okay. And then we're going to give, do closing statements, okay? So we'll have a question for Kevin.
This is the last one.
This is the last question, that's what I'm trying to say. Go ahead.
Make it count, Jeff. It puts a lot of pressure on me there to ask. So I'm going to ask a very convoluted question. I'd like to follow up on the whole library thing. But in a similar context, the city has also been wrestling with how much money to spend on the banquet facility for the golf course. And... And, and also approving hangars for the airport. So the broader question to me is, should the city be in the business of running airports or in the business of running golf courses?
In short, I'll say yes, for the simple fact that our airport, for those who may not recall, was under private management not many years ago, terribly run. Our airport has seen tremendous growth just within the last several years through Constance, who is our manager at the airport, Wilma, who's been working as our liaison with city staff, and really turning around our airport. Because it's truly an asset for our city. It's an economic development driver as much as it is an airport that people should utilize. So the projects such as the banquet facility and the airport hangars are somewhat unique into themselves unlike the library because they generate revenue. There's not too many projects that I can recall in my 10-year history in elected office where I can say that we've approved projects that have brought city back into our general fund. And that's happening with these projects. Now, I don't necessarily agree. I was pretty vocal on the banquet facility with what was showed to us, and I truly did not believe, as I said to the library, if we're going to do it, we should do it right. The banquet facility that was proposed, under the million dollar, dollar amount, was a metal shed and was not something that I felt we could be proud of. And was not something I felt we should spend anything more than a couple dollars to invest in, which is why I felt a larger project should be necessary.
This is where me and the mayor disagree again. First of all, we've been lied to. Any money that's generated from that airport cannot go into the general fund. It would be illegal. The FAA would chew us a new one. Now, can they pay us back for the money we gave them? Absolutely. How do I know this? Because I called them and I asked them. As far as the banquet hall, we don't need a banquet hall. We got enough, we buy enough stuff. You know, I don't think that they went to anybody, the person, the board of health that runs that didn't even know that we were going to have a banquet hall. So we need to go through the proper channels and do it correctly.
Okay. Okay, so what we're going to do now is, we're actually going to go to 90, Devin, we'll do a minute and 30 second closing statements, and we'll let, okay, Kevin has the microphone. We'll let, we'll let Kevin start.
Again, thank you all very much for attending this evening. I hope that you'll stay around and listen to the next round of questions and answers from our council candidates. I want to thank the city counselors who is here, who are here as well, and those who are running in public office. It's not an easy thing to do. I made note of my 10-year history in public office, and it's crazy to think that at 20 years old, I was elected to the Board of Education back in 2009. Since then, running for city council successfully and being your mayor since 2015. And I can truly say, over the last 10 years, I have not taken it for granted at all. There are days I'll wake up and question why I'm doing this, but it's looking back over the course of the last 10 years and looking at everything that we've accomplished, whether it's starting on the Board of Education and seeing us through to full day kindergarten, seeing us through to two new high schools that we can be proud of, and renovations that our kids are now reaping the benefits of now, through our city council and the changes that we've seen over the last several years to just ensure as mayor, being here in this city, my job is really to help solve problems. And it's whether it's navigating my way through a city council meeting or working with members of the public who reach out to my office for help on a daily basis. And I hope, while I may not always give you the best answer, that I'm here for you whenever you need. And I want to thank all of you again for coming and my family and friends for all of your continued support.
First of all, I want to thank everybody, the citizens of Meriden for coming out to hearing what we had to say, the Record Journal, and the school for having us. But all I've seen in the 10 years that the mayor's been here is a bunch of confusion. I feel that we've had a lot of failed projects. You know, we built those schools. I guess they didn't need grass or nobody decided to put grass in the budget. I don't know how they did that one. A lot of the tiebreakers where they shouldn't have got money or decisions should have went to a no is because the mayor broke the tiebreaker. You know, this mayor is part, I believe, part of the clique. And we don't need any more cliques. We need people that's going to be transparent, that's going to speak the truth, that's not going to cost us $37,000, that's not going to cost us $160,000 on the Manny Santos. We need somebody that's going to stand up for the people. And when the people say, we don't want this, he has something that's called a line item veto. He could have went in and vetoed some of that stuff so the taxpayer would not be burdened the way that they are. So he's been here 10 years too long. It's time that we get some new blood in and see how they work. Give them the same change, you know, we need change. Give him the same, give them the same change, challenge that he had so we could see where they're going. So far, Meriden is going nowhere. People can't afford to live here. So we need some new blood, new decisions. Hopefully, you'll vote for me.
Okay. Okay, so that concludes the Merrill portion of this forum. I want to thank Kevin Scarpatty and Ernestine Hallaway for participating and sticking to the time really well. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to do the, we're going to do the area council races next. I think we need about five minutes, five minutes we'll go. We're going to go as soon as we're ready up here. So if we could get all the area candidates up here. Okay, we're going to start. Okay, this is, of course, the area city council races, and we expect to go about an hour with this session. The way this will work is, a question will be posed to a table. So you see, we have the candidates set up at two different tables. And a question will go to a table, and then that table has 90 seconds to answer. They can divide up their time however they like. And then the other table would have 30 seconds. The other thing that may happen is, we may have an area-specific question. And in that case, of course, that's going to the counselor in that area. That counselor will have 90 seconds. And then the other counselor from that area would also have 90 seconds, okay? All right. Very good. Okay, so we, the first thing I want to do though is, of course, introduce the candidates. And I'll start with the table of the Democrats' table. And we have Sonia Jelks from Area 1. We have, we have Nicole Tomasetti from Area 2. Okay. We have Crystal Blake from Area 3. We have Kathy Batista from Area 4. Okay, and at the Republican We the People table, we have Jetha Cottrell, Area 1, excuse me. We have Dave Grodsky, Area 2. We have Joseph Olano, Area 3. And we have, I'm sorry, Michael Carabetta, Area 4. Okay, we drew straws, and the first question is going to go to the Democrats' table. And I'm going to ask it, so the table would have 90 seconds to respond. Okay, and this question comes from our partner, the Midstate Chamber of Commerce. Do you support continued city funding for the Making Meriden Business Center?
Oh, lucky me, I'm first. Yes, I absolutely do. But not in and of itself. That's not the only group of individuals that can really help Meriden. There has to be a collaboration with the rest of the city, our Economic Development Department and our city manager. But also, more importantly, what I'm seeing with the public and with those that contact me personally, that the taxpayers are involved in those issues as well, that they can be at the table with things like that. So yes, I absolutely support it. I know it would be a help. It already is. But I do see the need to refine it and get everybody on the same table so people are not operating in silos, so that we're all together on the same page, we all have the same vision and mission. And that's what I see, and I know it can happen if we all get together.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So it's a great partnership that, can everyone hear, yeah, there you go. So it's a great partnership that we have. Should city funds be used? I don't believe so. I believe that, you know, we have enough departments in the city with economic development. I think GOFest does a terrific job. I think if we, part, him with partnership with Dave Cooley, I think, you know, we could come up with some better things. But look at the money what we spent so far, and again, the return on investment, how much we're spending, what are we getting in return? And if you look down on Colony Street, 24 Colony Street, three years later, still empty.
Okay, so the next question will come from Jeff or Matt to the Republican table. The Republican We the People table.
Okay, well, welcome. Thanks for coming. The question I have is about a, involves a presentation that the city manager recently gave regarding panhandling in Meriden. And it's, obviously, it's not limited to Meriden. It's all over. But admirably, Meriden at least is talking about it. And I was just wondering what your take is on it.
All right, I'm not going to infringe on anybody's freedom of speech, although that panhandling can pose to be a safety issue. I think that's something that our police department should look into so that in the future, maybe something horrible might happen. But again, it's a freedom of speech issue.
So again, it is one of those great areas that you have. Again, I'm all for people's First Amendment rights because if you start with panhandling, where does it end? You know, with, as with anything with government, you know, the more you let government in, the more they're going to take. So listen, you know, if it gets aggressive, that's one thing. The police department needs to take the proper steps to handle that. But as far as their right to be there, no. Just like I wouldn't want my right taken when I'm standing on the corners every morning or anyone here waving signs because I'm running for political office. You know, if panhandlers are bad, is every politician that stand on the corner now, I understand, most people would say yes because they don't like politicians, but, but again, you know, it's our First Amendment right to be there, and it's their First Amendment right to be there. And that's a slippery slope when you start letting government start to dictate what you can say and where you can say it.
Okay, the Democrats have 30 seconds.
So the panhandling in Meriden obviously has become an issue when we've been reaching out, and many constituents have addressed the issue with us. So we are making sure that we look at the whole picture, that it is, if it becomes a traffic safety issue and related to traffic safety violations, making sure that if it's an ordinance put in place, because most, all of them have been thrown out through Supreme Court. So again, violation of freedom of speech, we want to be very cautious of that and make sure that we honor everyone's First Amendment.
Okay, so we have a question for the Democrats.
Is Meriden business-friendly? And if not, what are your ideas to make it more business-friendly?
Unfortunately, I think in the past, we have had, we've heard at least anecdotally that the city has been not friendly. And so we've been trying as counselors to understand exactly what does that mean. And in some cases, we've had businesses be able to tell us that, well, if I'm applying for a particular license or if I'm looking to pay certain fees, that some things can be difficult for them in City Hall. And so we have been working with not only this city manager administration, but also previous ones to look at how we can streamline services in town, to ensure that businesses are being welcomed. Prior to our change in economic development, we know that there were a lot of changes and things that were being put in place to ensure that not only were we going out, not only are we encouraging businesses to come into the city, but we're also going out and pursuing and letting businesses know that not only are we here, there are opportunities that you might actually fit, and there are also things that we may actually be able to do for you. And so hopefully, if you are a business and you're interested in doing business with us, please contact us and let us know.
Sorry. Can't wait to get the mic. Okay, 13, 12 seconds. Okay, so yes, Meriden has been unfriendly. It has. I have constituents calling me, telling me that when they call the office, they're not happy. So the city manager is going to do customer service training. We have new staff, particularly in planning.
Okay, sorry, that's time. You can go back to any topic, though. It's your time, so. And one other thing, since I've interrupted, the clock doesn't start running until the tables start speaking. So you certainly have a minute or whatever you have to decide how you want to answer the question. The clock isn't running, Devin, right, until they start talking. So you can do a little huddle on questions. Okay, we're at the Republican We the People table for 30 seconds.
Okay. Meriden has not been as business-friendly as it can be. There is a lot of things we can do for new businesses. If you're a new business coming into the city, you have to sit in front of economic development. You have to go to planning and zoning. There is a way to streamline that process to make it easier for a new business to get what it needs to open. We are offering tax incentives for businesses that, to open just downtown. But what about the area outside of downtown? I think we're forgetting that Meriden is a big city. There are areas that can use the business, manufacturing businesses, things like that outside of downtown that we need to also offer incentives for.
That's time. Okay, next question.
Kathy, I'll give you a chance to respond.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Was it? No, I go to the Republicans.
Okay, right, right, okay, go ahead, Jeff. I'm sorry, go ahead.
But it's a sim, it's a similar thing. I mean, part and parcel of attracting businesses involves the perception of Meriden in general. It's not just a business thing. It's something that the city has struggled with for quite a long time, really, which is a perception. And I'd like you to address that. And what sort of concrete things can the city do, can government do, if anything, to make that friendlier perception?
That's a good question about perception. I see that constantly. I am very involved with the Restore with the Arts in bringing the Twilight Concert Series to downtown Meriden. We started out on the Twilight at the amphitheater with, if we had 100 people on a Friday night or a Saturday. Now we're up to events on a Friday night, 500, 600, 2,000 people. We're getting people that are saying, things are great down on the Green. It's not as bad as people say. We have people coming from out of town. They come on a train, they drive in, and the perception we're working on. We had the largest event on the Green take place this past summer with the Joby Rogers, where we had estimates of over 4,000 people on. Not an incident. We've never had an incident down there with our Twilight Concert Series. We've got the Yule Fest, which we hold on Colony Street to show people. It's things, the perception we're working on. It is safe downtown, so we want people to come down and see us.
In order to change that perception as well, you need to change the appearance. And I think we can focus more on some of the blight laws downtown, but also throughout the city to make sure that we're looking as good as we feel here in Meriden. You get off some of the highways, especially over on West Main Street by Hubbard Park, and the road still needs to be done as you get down into the center of Meriden.
Okay, the Democrats have 30 seconds.
Okay. So image, yes, is a, it is a problem, but we're all part of that solution. So just as there are naysayers going around talking against the city, some with legitimate concerns, absolutely, we all have to be part of the solution. We all have to be part of the solution that talks positively about Meriden and its strengths. Because if we don't believe there's any strengths here, we've got a problem. We do have strengths here. We need to talk it up. That's part of the strategy, to change the image. And I agree with Mr. Carabetta, and also what things really look like in our community.
Okay. So just to stay, I'm going to stay on this thread and maybe come at it from a different direction. Because I had someone from Area 1 who was very concerned about the proposed car wash at Twist and Broad Street. That is Area 1?
No.
Area 2? Sorry about that. Okay, Area 2. Area 2. So I had someone, again, ask me about that proposed car wash. So I want to ask the Area 2 candidates, and we'll start with Nicole, right? We're on the Democrat side table. Do you support that commercial car wash at Twist Avenue and Broad Street?
So I have heard, I've spoken with people, I've been door to door, and I have heard that there are a lot of concerns about Broad Street, especially in terms of our kids that are walking to those two schools, Edison and Washington. And I think it's important to point out that this road, Broad Street, is a state road. So unfortunately, the state has to come in and do a, like, a transportation review of the, a traffic review. So until we get the review of that, of the street, we can't make any decisions on whether or not we're going to put any sort of car wash or anything else there. So I think it's important to remember that, you know, while we want to make sure that safety is the number one thing, it's important to encourage economic development down, throughout town. But like I said, we have to wait and see. So I can't really comment on whether I'd support it or not because I think we have to wait and see what the state says about whether or not the road is even safe for it.
Okay. If anybody else, you have 35 seconds. If anybody else at this table wants to chime in. Nope? Okay. So then Dave Grodsky from Area 2, you'll have 90 seconds.
And I am Dave Grodzicki.
Grodzicki. Sorry, Dave Grodzicki.
That's okay. Just want to clarify that. As a resident who lives up in the area behind where the proposed car wash would go, I hear and heard from many of the citizens up there, there's, we're not against economic growth. There's a lot of factors up there. One is the environmental impact. You have Harbor Brook, which starts up at Crescent Lake and is, been recognized that it is palpable water all the way until it hits Broad Street. The car wash, I did and was one of two people who saw the sketch and the whole idea of the car wash. And one of the questions I had was, winter comes along, what's going to happen with all the cars? They said they can hold 47 cars in queue. They're going to be bleeding. They're going to be plowing the snow and everything up against Harbor Brook. That's going to end up in Harbor Brook. We're going to end up at Harbor Brook up in there being polluted. We have a deer herd that lives up in there. We have, last year, we, last year was a count, and we have pictures of eight deer living up in the area, aside from the other wildlife. The whole area of safety, I've been up there just recently, we have trucks that are parking in the center lane, which is the turn lane to turn into the businesses. They're just parking and leaving their vehicles there and running into Cumberland Farms. We have a, we have a state bus, number 566, which is parking on the curbs, blocking the walkway for the kids coming through there.
Thank you, Dave Grodzicki. And the next question will be for the Republican We the People table.
So as you guys know, Affirm is working on designing a new banquet facility at Hunter's that'll cost between 1.3 and 1.5 million. And when those designs are complete, the city council will then have to decide whether to move forward with the project and improve funding. So just plainly, would you support a banquet facility between 1.3 and 1.5 million?
I do not, at this point, want any banquet facility at the golf course for any taxpayer dollars. I think at this point, where we are with the city and its bonding as it is, the taxpayers are taking all the risk on this one, and Violy's is getting all of the reward. It's really not fair. None of us know how to run a banquet hall. There has, counter, project is the hangars, and I'll explain this in a second, that they have lease numbers and people waiting for those hangars. So they know exactly how much money they're going to get. They can build those hangars because there's a business plan there. This is a banquet hall that's going to cost 1.5 million dollars payable over almost 30 years for a room that will sit vacant 90% of the time. And I just don't think that the city should be paying for this right now.
Okay. 30 seconds.
Okay. So, so right now.
I think we still had.
Oh, you had time. I'm sorry. That was my fault. You, you know what, Devin? Will you put 30? Who's up?
All right. Just a.
30 seconds.
Being that it is in Area 2, there is concern up there for the facility. Why did we only, why didn't we get outside companies looking to build that facility up there? Why is it the city responsible for building that? You know, why don't we have a line of outside developers who want to put that banquet facility up there?
Okay. All right. 30 seconds.
Okay. So I disagree with Mr. Carabatta. The place right now where the tent is, is booked all the time. There's events there all the time. This is a revenue generating project. It is not uncommon that a, that a project that bonds out 15 to 20 years takes that long for ROI. Also, Violy's pays rent to us. We would hope to get more rent from them as well. It's a win-win. But I think we should wait. I think right now what we're doing is just paying for an architect's design so that we can do it right or not at all. And that's what we're waiting for. That's the only thing I agree to.
Okay. All right. So the next question is going to be for the Democrats table.
Thanks. This is related somewhat in terms of decisions that the council has made, airport hangars, banquet facilities for golf courses. But I'd like to know what your position is on the funding for the public library.
So I, it's no secret that I've been somewhat vocal about the library. I was on the library building committee. I very firmly support us growing our city and doing the work that we need to do to improve all of our municipal buildings. The library does need work, and I've supported that. My concern was, like most people, is it the right time to do it? And can we afford it? And I think what, the solution that we've gotten is that we do have some funding, the majority of funding that is for the library. Our hope is that in the time period that we have now, that we will do what I initially had hoped we would do, which is to raise some funds, public, private, so that we can help lower some of the tax base on the city.
So I was in favor of the full project and getting the whole thing done and doing it right. The middle suggestion was for renovation only, not expansion. I work in the school system. I talk to families all the time that go to Wallingford to use the library. Our library is not updated. Some people have said, nobody reads books anymore. Wrong. And there's so much going on at the library. Thank you. That we don't have room for right now, and that's the technology, the teen center. 12 years ago, we looked at renovating. It's a city facility. I look carefully at money toward maintaining city facilities. So we have to do something with all our facilities.
30 seconds. Go ahead.
So let's talk about the library. Listen, I, when the library came up, I showed pictures of, right now, half the library is being emptied with shelves. That's not being filled. But yet, we spend $213,000 every year to restock them. Listen, if you look at what was passed, they're in a brand-new library. Everything that she just talked about is in the plan. The only thing that's not in the plan is they're not moving the front doors over to the right about 200 yards, and they're not adding a new facility for the expansion, which is only a meeting hall, which we already have six in there, and you have the Curtis Center and any other city building you want to hold meetings. It just doesn't make any sense.
Okay. Good. Time. All right. Next question is for Republican We the People, right? Matt, go ahead.
Last summer, almost 6,000 residents voted in the budget referendum and sent a message to the council to reconsider spending and lower taxes. In the last year plus since then, has the council done enough to respond to residents' concerns?
Oh, definitely not. The referendum showed that bipartisanly, the city of Meriden's taxpayers will get together and all have the same feeling that the taxes are too high, that we're spending too much money. So when we had our vote and they had to relook at their budget, they gave us a 1% decrease, 1% decrease in the increase that they had projected. Then they went and spent 4% more. So that right there is them either ego or just not caring, saying they're going to do whatever they want. And I just don't think that's right. So at this point this year, we've reached our bond cap two months into the fiscal year. So I asked the question back to the public, have they listened to what we said?
Okay. You got it. Your clock's running, so go ahead.
So the first thing, you know, you hear people say who are against a referendum, this is a Republican thing. It's not. I mean, if you look at the numbers, the numbers don't lie. You know, 2,036 Democrats went out and voted for, in a public referendum, which one of them was not my opponent. 26, 20, 2,626 unaffiliateds came out and voted. Listen, the people came out and voted and said, we won't, this is enough. So they patronized us and said, all right, well, we'll give them what they want, we'll give them 3%. Pat themselves on the back. No more than two months later, they added another $700,000, and then they add another $3.5 million, 7%. Unless you pay attention, you would never know that 7% was spent last year.
Time. Okay. Just to, I guess, stick with that thread, and we're going to the Democrats table. Is that where the next question's going? Robato first. Sorry.
No, it was your question. It was your question.
Was it our question?
Yes.
See, you confused me, Joe Valano. I got confused. Go ahead. 30 seconds. Sorry.
So I appreciate the public coming out for referendums. Absolutely, it's their right. They're absolutely right. They were to go out there, they did that. We went back to the budget. I do not like hearing things like, all we did was pat them on the back, just throw something out there. We work hard on this budget. Really hard on the budget. It was a challenge. It takes $3,100,000 to cut one mil rate. 3 million. So whenever you cut, you're cutting services. Can we do that? And sometimes we have? Yes.
That's time. Okay. You know, folks, we want to get as many questions in as we can, okay? So, all right. That doesn't help. All right. So we are now at the Democrats table, right? For a question that will get a 90-second response. Okay.
I was just trying to find out where this question came from, but it really doesn't matter because it's a pretty good question. If you received a $1 million grant for the city to spend in any way that you wanted, how would you spend it and why?
Okay. You can take your time to decide how we do this.
Being a former law enforcement.
No, it's here. No, it's all right. We're all doing the best we can. So the Democrats have 90 seconds, and the clock will start when you start talking. So.
Wow. That is a really, really good question. I will tell you that generally, whenever I think that we have an opportunity to do something, if it's grant-based, I'm assuming that it's a one-time and that we are specifically using it towards something. I would like to see that money go toward our kids, whether that be the educational system or whether that be through programs that we can do. Part of these concerns that we have around crime and issues is that we, we need to engage our kids. And if we, crime starts with education, and it starts with keeping our kids off the street and giving them productive things to do. So, you know, those are the things that we have to make investments in. And unfortunately, you know, we don't always have the money to do that. And the city has been very progressive with going out and looking for grants. If you look at a lot of our departments, whether it be the Health Center that does a lot of youth programming, there is a lot of grants that we go out for. And we work with a lot of our partnering organizations in the city, B2 Street, you know, the YMCA, and they do a tremendous job to help. But we do need more funding for these programs because a lot of these programs are very cost prohibitive from, for a lot of families. And we don't just want to do the young programs. We have to do programs for teens as well.
I also think, too, with the whole opioid epidemic, obviously, the city's been on top of it and doing well. We could wrap in the panhandling and the homelessness, its wraparound services and social services. So any grants for that can tremendously help.
Okay. The Republicans have 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Being a former law enforcement, first female police officer in the town of Hampden, I would spend half of that money on enhanced public safety. I think the way that, if we look to our past, we can probably improve our future. Also, some of that money should go to youth-enhanced programs, activities, and outlets. Our children don't have any outlets that they can engage into. I believe in basketball courts, maybe skating parks, things of that nature. Our children need more outlets.
Okay. All right. So the next question is going to go to the Republican We the People table for 90 seconds.
This is particularly for Area 1 candidates, but it can go to any candidates, really. What should the city do to address recent spike in shootings in the city, the good bulk of which have occurred in the downtown area?
I believe that the best deterrent to crime is visibility. We need more police patrol. We need foot patrol. I believe we need some type of substations. I think we need a lot of resource officers in school. We need training programs out there for the residents to respond to, to know what to do when something is happening in their area. If you see something, say something.
So you look at crime. Crime runs statistically with economic development. When you're stagnant in economic development or your developments go down, crime goes up. That's just the way it is. If you look at low-income housing, our deputy police chief said the same thing. You know, when you build more, you're going to need to provide more resources to the police department because unfortunately, crime goes up there. So, and there's a lot of places that we could focus on, but.
I would say, and we have had our share of shootings lately in Area 4, specifically over on Allen Ave. And as, although I don't think the NI unit is getting the results that it should or that it could, and I support having an NI unit, I think we need to revamp how that NI unit is executed. And like they had said, more visibility, especially at those times of day where this is happening more often.
Okay. So I think because it was an Area 1 question, others did chime in. Sonya, you would have 90 seconds if you'd like.
Sure.
And you could divide it among your tablemates, too.
I have two kids, and we live in Area 1 and probably near some of the hotspots where the shootings take place. I am concerned for my own children when these things happen. Unfortunately, policing is a community effort. We cannot put police in every position. Every time there's a shooting or a crime or something that takes place, the first thing that we do is we ask the city manager and the chief, is that, is that area, was there neighborhood initiative? Is there, are there in that position? The cops will never be there for every crime that happens, unfortunately. And so we have to make sure that we all actively engage in policing our communities, whether it's participation, active participation in neighborhood initiative, or whether it's in helping to support us when we're, when we're looking at funding or additional resources for council to get to the police. We need to make sure that the entire community is involved in this process.
I don't think it's fair to see that, say that poor people cause crimes. I think people who live in affordable housing are good people and that statistically, they need to look at the city as a whole.
Okay. All right. So the next question is going to be for, actually, we're going to stay with the Democrats. And I'm going to stay on this thread, if that's okay. Because in the last session, we had a discussion about the amount of information that the public is receiving on serious crime, shootings, et cetera. And I wanted to ask the table, are you satisfied with the amount of information the public is getting on serious crimes? Anybody, you have 90 seconds.
Yeah, I'm unhappy with the way council hears reports. There's definitely room for improvement. Because if I get phone calls from you, I don't have an answer for you, sometimes until hours later. And that's upsetting. My constituents call me or email me all the time. If it's an investigation, no, we can't comment. But we can at least assure them of anything that we do know. And that's really important. I want to see that change. them of anything that we do know, and that's really important. I want to see that change. It isn't just the chief, it's the city manager. That's the beginning thing, and the relationship we have with the Record Journal and the media as well. I don't like finding out things in the newspaper, first. No offense. We have a right, we were elected to represent you, to keep you in the loop. We need to know what's going on, first. Okay, second, after the police.
So I can't speak as a city councillor, but I can speak as a regular citizen, and I feel like it's important to build trust between our community and our police officers, and communication is a great first step for that trust. So I think we can always do more to make sure that, you know, the department as a whole, as well as individual officers, are making sure that they're communicating with our citizens, so that people feel like we're all on the same page, and we're all on the same team, because we are.
Okay, so the other table would have 30 seconds.
Prior to even thinking about getting involved in politics, I found out about the council neighborhoods, and I started attending many of the neighborhood watch meetings throughout town, six or seven of them. And I found that was a nice way, or a convenient way, to find out what's going on, because I could talk directly with the police officers, and I could say to them, and ask them questions, and get good answers. So, hearing that, I'm really in favor of the council neighborhoods and neighborhood initiative officers.
Okay. Okay, so this question is going to go to Republican We the People table, and then this is the last question. So after that, we'll have closing statements, okay? So they'll have 90 seconds, then 30, and then we'll do closing statements.
That last question always comes to me, and I feel the pressure here.
Yeah, I know.
So Matt and I were just saying that we were going to ask this to the at-large candidates, but there's no problem asking you as well. And basically, it's about spending for education, and what do you think the proper, given that there's been nearly 10 years of zero budget increases for the school system, do you think it should increase? Do you think it's, you know, how do you stand on it?
Well, we're regulated a bunch of ways through the state on what you can take back and what you can give. So once you give, you can't take it back. I mean, we just gave $500,000 just six months ago. And if you look back on, you know, the Board of Ed over the last 10 years, yeah, so the city hasn't increased what they've given, but the state has. And on top of it, anyone who knows the Alliance Grants has also gone up. I mean, it started 15 years ago at about $1.4 million. It's up to almost $20 million a year now. So to say that the Board of Education is not getting their fair share is just wrong. Again, you know, I could sit here and try to cater to people and say, "Yeah, you know, we want to spend a ton of money on education." We spend $200 million a year on education. That's not including all the in-kind services that the city does, for buildings. You know, if we look at what we just bonded for the Maloney and for Platte, I think Meriden has showed their commitment to the Board of Education and to our children, and I think we do a very good job. Board of Ed does, you know, a decent job. I think, you know, every year they come back with their scare tactics, that we're going to cut teachers. But yet, look at how top-heavy we are. And we have two assistant superintendents, which we got one left. Good for him, because he went to be commissioner, but they didn't need to fill his job, so why was he there in the first place? Spread it around. You don't need to be spending money. The answer is not always spend, spend, spend. Sometimes you just need to reorganize.
Okay, so we've got 30 seconds to this table, the Democrats.
So our children are the foundation of our future, and we think investing in our school system is very important. Personally, obviously, I have a child in the Meriden school system. I think their rebuilding and what they've done to the buildings is amazing, and the outside, the structure, but we also need help in the classrooms and the teachers. Many teachers have to buy their own school supplies, which isn't fair. Meriden has 162 and 166 in per-pupil spending. So, like I said, the new facilities are great, but can we invest more in the school system with the teachers inside the classroom?
Okay, that's time. That's time. Okay, so we're going to do closing statements now. Is that okay? Everybody's ready for closing statements? And we're going to do, you've been an excellent group, very orderly, and we're going to do 90 seconds, because we've been very efficient here. And the Democrats took the first question, so my thought is, is we'll start with the Republican We the People table, and maybe we could just start with Jetha and come this way. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Go ahead, Jetha, you'll have 90 seconds.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight for this debate. It's very interesting, of course. I am a military vet, former law enforcement. I have many years in the legal field. One thing in law enforcement and the legal field, what you have to do is that you have to fact-find, you have to research, you have to put your investigation forward so that you can write an accurate report. If I'm elected, or when I'm elected, I'm going to do all those things. I'm going to go across the board with my colleagues to try to find a non-addictive way of spending your money.
Okay, next.
We're just going to, I was going to come right down the table. You each have 90 seconds, okay?
First of all, good evening, Meriden citizens, and I do thank you for all being here. I'm not only a senior citizen mayor, and I'm also a property owner, a business owner, and a taxpayer. As a retiree, I bring 50 years of pension services and corporate experience in my resume. As a candidate for council of Area 2, I am not running on my name, or my family's name, but on my accomplishments here in Meriden. And here's a list of some of those accomplishments. I'm the vice president, treasurer of Restore with the Arts, which has brought to the Meriden Green the very successful Twilight Concert Series. I'm chairman of the Downtown Meriden Yule Fest. I'm a member of the very successful Farmers Market, and I'm a member of the committee. I'm a member of the Downtown Beautification Committee. I'm vice chairman of the Wise Men. I'm an active member of the North End Community Neighborhood and the Community of Neighborhoods. I'm a member of the North End Community Garden. I was involved with the recent restoration of the Traffic Tower downtown. I'm a member of the city's pension board. I'm active at city council and committee meetings. I'm in support of the NI unit. So those are some of my points that I'd like to bring up there, my accomplishments. So I do thank you all for being here, and I look forward to your vote on November 5th.
First, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. I know how everyone's time is so valuable. So, you know, I appreciate everyone coming out and listening to what everybody has to say. You know, it's important to hear both sides. But at the end of the day, we need to talk about the reality of it. Because let's talk about the reality of what's going on here in Meriden. We're spending way too much money. Our crime is going up. Now, yes, NI officers, and this is one of the biggest things for me, is NI officers are critical, but it shouldn't be officers, they should be sergeants and lieutenants with district managers. We need to restructure. When something doesn't work, we need to restructure. The other side just wants to throw more money at it. That's all they want to do, and hope for the best. You know, you heard that word a couple times from over there, "hope." Listen, they told us to bring it, and hopefully, we'll bring businesses downtown. Three years later, it's totally empty. I'm not looking for hope. I'm looking to do things that are realistic and tangible, that are going to make effects right now. You know, we talked about incentive programs before. You know, as a small business owner, I know how hard it is. I know that as an owner, you're the last person to grab a paycheck. We need to make those incentives, not just to big corporations. We need to stop our addiction to grant money, because it's not helping anyone. You guys, the taxpayers, are the ones that are suffering. Wouldn't you like an 80% tax abatement? But you're not going to get one, but these corporations did, to build low-income housing. That is already getting state and federal money, and low-interest loans.
Okay, that's time, thanks.
That's why we need to be realistic and bring common sense back to town.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out and hearing me speak about the things that I've been talking about on social media and newspapers for a while. Also, thank you from my family for supporting me through all of this. The other side will tout progress as something that they've invested $100 million in downtown on these vacant apartments and empty storefronts. I wouldn't call that progress. I would call that stagnant. And my opponent here used the word naysayer, and I guess I could be called a naysayer some of the time. But if we don't open our eyes to the problems in the city, and we only focus on what we believe is good, we will never see the problems in the rest of the city. You have to open your eyes up. You have to look at every single problem, and you have to put some kind of solution together. Here are some positives that we can build on coming up. Midstate Medical Center wants to put a huge expansion at their hospital, and that is a huge taxpayer for the city of Meriden. This expansion will bring in more jobs, more commerce to the area, and it will also bring in more taxes. We need to work towards a biennial car tax to give the taxpayers a break. We need to fix the budget as we step down spending each year. We need to allow for more infrastructure repairs across the city, not just in certain areas. We need to hold department heads accountable, and hold property owners more accountable for their appearance in a huge part of the city.
Okay, that's the time. Okay, I think we're to Kathy Batista.
Sorry, borrowing the mic. Okay, got to talk fast again, because there's a lot of misinformation going out there. The most important thing for you to understand is the budgets in the last few years were bipartisan. So when I hear the word "they," 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 they were bipartisan unanimously passed for three out of the four years. That fourth year was a one-nay, and it wasn't a Republican or the other party. They have voted in favor of everything that has been put forward to make Meriden great. They've done that. That's a fact. With me, I'm going to give you specifics. I'm going to give you specifics, not just general terms about holding people accountable and all that. Here's specifics. What I've done in my term, my terms, a couple of things. We opened the Second Linear Trail, that's a quality-of-life thing. I look at quality of life, future revenues, and maintaining city properties. The other thing I did was expand on disabled veterans exemption income limits. That happened a few years ago with another Democratic councillor. Expanded senior tax exemptions with the mayor, Kevin, to make that happen. These are resolutions we put in and passed to save those individuals money. What I'm looking forward to, because I'm going to skip to what I want to do, what's in my project of future, I want to have office hours, because the referendum told me, "You've got a lot to say." I knew that anyway, but here's an option, office hours. I want to do that.
Okay, I'm sorry, Kathy. That's time.
So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Crystal Blake. Thank you for coming out tonight to listen to all of us, our ideas, a lot of hard-working people up here. Thank you to the Record Journal and Midstate Chamber and the Board of Ed, Washington Middle School, for hosting us tonight. So as many of you know, this is my first time running for office, and I've been involved in Meriden, born and raised here my whole life. I have a daughter here in the Meriden Public School System. Thank you to them, my family, for coming out tonight and supporting. I'm really big on collaboration and community partnerships. A lot of the work I've done here in one of the communities I cover for work is really getting the best for our children. Our children are our future. Obviously, I'm very passionate about that. Some of the programs I've been involved in is the Boys and Girls Club, Project Graduation. I said I'm on the board for the Midstate Chamber. A lot of, Meriden is very fortunate to have so many organizations, whether for-profit or nonprofit, activities, social services, wraparound services for people of all ages. There's many people in the community that need help, and if we all work together and collaborate, work smarter, not harder, we can really do a lot for the city. Meriden is very, very fortunate. So thank you all again. If you need further information on me, or you're, you know, looking to, I've been out door knocking, but if you're looking for more info, feel free to visit our website or my Facebook page. Thank you. So thank you, all of you, for coming out tonight. Thank you for caring and being invested in this process, and thank you to the Record Journal and the Midstate Chamber for hosting this, as well as Washington Middle School for having us. So, as a young professional and a lifelong Meriden resident, I do think I bring something to the table when I'm running for city council. I have a master's degree in public policy, so I understand the policy process. This is what my degree was in. So I have studied public budgets, municipal budgets. I know how to interpret them. I know how to implement them, and I know how to craft them so that they represent the people that live in our city. I'm running for city council because I love the city of Meriden, and all I want to do is use the skills that I have to give back. So I'm just, I just think Meriden is a great place to live and a great place to be, and I'm just honored to have the opportunity to run and ask for your support, so that I can try and make it even better and as good as possible. So I just want to say that, most importantly, I've been going door-to-door and speaking with people, and what I hear most is people want a government that is transparent, that is accessible, and that listens to them. So I promise, no matter what I do, I'm going to include the public in the budget process and how that works. And I want to hear from you and what's important to you. And I want you to know, I want to hear from you when you hear about what we're going to spend our money on. So I promise, if I'm elected, that that's what I'll be doing.
It has been my extreme honor to have served this community, first and foremost. I humbly thank my children for allowing me the time that it takes to do this work, and I hope that we have helped you to understand that the work that we do is very difficult work for us. And we love Meriden, we live in Meriden, we love and want to grow this city like everyone else here. The difference, though, is what's their plan and what's our plan. We've had over 20 years of Democratic leadership that has taken on a lot of the revitalization efforts that have taken place in downtown. Some people disagree with them, but in the case of what we're doing, these projects would not have happened if we didn't have people that stepped up and went out and asked for outside help, that asked for collaborations between state and federal. And in many cases, we're solving problems that just weren't being solved in the city. Our flood control projects have brought so much growth into the city, so many opportunities. There aren't a lot of communities in Connecticut that are getting these opportunities, and we should be proud of that. We have a lot of growth that we're experiencing. I hope everyone continues to be involved. You guys will let us know what you want us to do, and you'll give me an opportunity to go back and continue to work for you, be honest and open about the things that are happening, and I hope to gain your support. Thank you guys so much for coming out tonight.
Okay, so that concludes this session. I want to thank all the candidates for participating. We will do the at-large next, and we'll need about five minutes or so to set things up. So if the at-large candidates could come up, that would help, okay? Good, thanks, Richie. Okay, folks, we're going to get started. We're going to get started. Could everybody take their seat? Because we have a pretty good-sized group here, and we want to give them plenty of time to answer questions. Okay. Okay. So this is the candidates for at-large council. And what we're going to do here is, and I'm going to introduce them all, but just so we're all clear, a candidate will get a direct question, and they'll have 60 seconds to respond. And then every other candidate will get 30 seconds. It's kind of a different format. We'll see how it works. There'll be plenty, everybody will have plenty of chances to speak, but they'll have to keep an eye on the clock. The other thing I'd suggest with this is, and you're the audience, you can do what you want, but since we're going to try to keep it moving, I think if you interrupt, applaud, every time someone speaks, it's just going to take away from the discussion. So that would be my suggestion, okay? All right, then. Let me introduce the candidates before we get started. Okay, way down farthest away from me, we have Arthur Petracelli, who is representing the A Meriden Party. Next to him, we have Ernestine Holloway, who is a petitioning at-large candidate. And then we have Dan Zabrowski, a Republican, who's at the Republican We the People group. And next to him is Bob Williams Jr. And down here closest to me, the table of Democrats, we have Michael Cardona and Michael Rody. And what we're going to do is, we're going to, just to bring some order to this, we're going to start with Arthur Petracelli is going to get the first question, Jeff and Matt, and then we're just going to work down, okay? we're just gonna work down, okay? And then do our best to keep track of who goes next in the 30-second response. But Ernestine, how it'll work is, is once Mr. Petracelli gets a question, you'll have 30 seconds, and it'll just come this way. Okay? I think I confused myself. I hope I didn't confuse anybody else. All right. All right, let's start. Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's start with a question to Arthur Petracelli.
Thank you. Mr. Petracelli, about 6,000 residents last summer voted on a budget rent referendum and sent the city council back to the drawing board and asked them to cut spending and lower taxes. Do you think the council has done enough in the last year and a half to cut spending and lower taxes?
They didn't do anything. They increased it. They increased their spending. That's what they did. They pay out of the taxpayers' money almost $3 million for city employees that have retired. They just squirt the money away, and they have no concern about people paying the freight in Meriden. They come up with, the architect was Lupkus, with this plan of getting rid of these people. The people that came back, they're getting the same pay. Like the Lupkus, he's retired, he's getting the pay. Cassette, he oughta be ashamed of himself. He's getting two pays, and who's the other individual, another one?
Okay, I'm sorry, that's time.
I don't think they did enough. I don't think that the city council actually heard the people, because if they did, they would not have given back money to these people. When we got the money from EverSource, instead of paying down the debt, they just went and gave it to everybody. They gave the police back the money that we said we wanted cut. They paid for things in advance for next year. So did we win? No. Should they all go? Yes.
And in regards to that also, a lot of the jobs that were put up forbid in the city of Meriden, I know of one that went up two pay grades. I said, "How in God's name do you people turn around and take and push people into other jobs?" There's a job out there right now that a gentleman was retired, they made him a brand-new job. Guess what? More money on the city tax rolls, and guess who's paying? Us. And it's really sad, they have not taken the bull by the horns and got the cuts.
It's not as easy as it sounds, believe me. I've been sitting there, and I'm not gonna be critical to any great degree, but it's not easy. All I can say is there's projects we agree on, we disagree on. I think referendum is a big part of the conversation. One of the things I didn't feel we needed were the renovations of the two ball fields, football fields at Platte and Maloney. That's multi, it's a multimillion-dollar project. Is it a lot? Yes. Was it necessary? No. So I mean, there's things like that that can make a difference. Can we sit there and wave a magic wand? No.
Okay, so the conundrum for the council is to balance services with keeping taxes as low as we can, and we continue to have conversations as a council with the city manager to find efficiencies in each department. And, look, I'm a taxpayer, I have a family, I have a budget, I don't wanna pay any more taxes than I have to, so we're keeping, we're trying to keep the miller rate as low as we can while not minimizing or damaging services that we provide to the residents.
Thank you. If someone asks me if I want my taxes cut, I'll be the first one to raise my hand. That's an easy, easy one. But that's only half the issue, because when you cut, things happen. There are consequences to that. And we saw, we lost police officers in various areas, we lost school resource officers, we lost the bookmobile, the fire department started charging for services they never had a charge before. That's the reality. So it's easy to call for cuts, but we need to understand what the consequences are, and if we're gonna make cuts, let's make them careful and prioritize them, not across the board, because that has unintended consequences.
That's time. Okay, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna try, we're gonna tweak this a little bit, because I felt like everybody was rushed. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have everybody who's asked a question directly get 90 seconds, okay? And then everybody else is gonna get a minute, because I just felt like y'all were rushing through your answers. Does that sound okay to everybody? Okay. So then, Ernestine Holloway, you will have 90 seconds on a direct question, and then we'll move to Dan Zabrowski. Come this way, and everybody will have a minute, okay? Go ahead, question to Ernestine.
Yeah, I wanna go back to the issue of panhandling. City manager gave a presentation to the council recently. In it, he talked about a couple ways the city can address it, both through coming up with long-term solutions for homelessness, but also adopting local ordinances to legislate panhandling. So, I guess, how big of an issue do you see panhandling, and what should the city be doing, if anything, to address it?
Panhandling is a huge issue. For new people coming into the city, would you wanna come to a city and open your business when you see panhandlers on every corner? Absolutely not. But I also know that we need to get involved with that shelter down there also. We need to see what they're doing. We need to see why is it insufficient? We've given them money, those people live there, so let's see what we can do to fine-tweak the problem. We can't put them out in the morning at 6 o'clock in the morning and expect them to do nothing, so they aggravate the public. Well, let's put them somewhere. Let's find programs for them. Let's give them the mental health that they need. And if it's drug addiction, Rushford gets, pays us $1 in rent. I'm pretty sure we can send them down there. They have, they have the staff, they're more capable of handling that. I just think that panhandling is the symptom of the problem. So until we look at it as a broad range, besides the mental health and education, do we have the jobs? And if we do get them the jobs, how they gonna get to work? Because our transit stops at 6 o'clock. So if they get a job third shift, that wouldn't work. So we need to fine-tweak some of everything so that it can work effectively.
And again, to leverage on panhandling, my biggest thing was, in 1996, Tony Thomasetti, who was councilman at that time, enacted a change in our charter, Chapter 148. It has never been put into our charter. I don't know why. I keep asking the city manager, "Why is it not there?" It only, not only takes care of the people as a First Amendment right, but it takes care of every, each and one of you that's being harassed by a panhandler. Look at the other states, I mean, really, in seriousness, New Jersey, stop for a panhandler, $500 fine. Is this a way to deter? Yes, it is. But again, they have their rights, as well as I have mine and everybody else. They should not be harassed, they should not be out on those roads, and our police officers should take a little more time and get a hold of these people and tell them, "Here, your rights are your rights, but stay out of the street, and if you're in the street, we will arrest you."
How big of an issue? It's a huge issue. Earlier today, the question was posed about perception and why people aren't gravitating towards the city of Meriden. Again, when you have someone out there panhandling, and they're actually coming into your private space, to your vehicle, looking for dollars, that's an invasion of privacy. I really don't know how we deal with it. I've had personal conversations with the chief and the city manager. I know that the city manager is aggressively looking into ways to deal with this, but again, it comes into a First Amendment right, and how do we deal with it? I don't have the magic wand for that. Again, I could tell you the city is working on that solution.
Yes, panhandling is an issue in the city of Meriden, and at the last Public Safety Committee meeting, we did direct the city manager to look into creating an ordinance that would deal with panhandling from a safety perspective because of the First Amendment rights that are, that are of issue there. So we are specifically dealing with it in what is occurring in high-traffic areas and intersections. And look, there needs to be a holistic approach to this, it can't just be enforcement. To that end, we have heard from multiple nonprofit initiatives that have reached out to these individuals to offer them wraparound services. And research shows the majority of these panhandlers have mental issues, so I think that, that holistic part of the equation to deal with this problem is critical. It can't just be an ordinance issue and locking them up.
Thank you. I'd just like to correct a false statement that was made, that the city never put into place the panhandling ordinance. It was ruled unconstitutional at the time, and therefore never went forward. My daughter lives in San Francisco, she did live in San Francisco, last week she moved out. She lived in a condo in downtown and won't, came downstairs and had to walk over people in sleeping bags on the sidewalk. It's really gotten out of hand. But as has been said, there's no magic bullet for this, there's no easy solution, but certainly some of the elements are. Being able to provide mental health services to people, making sure there are homeless shelters and outreach available, making sure that people have food and, and a place to sleep every day, and take care of those needs first. There's some people game the system, we know that for a fact. Public safety's a major part of this as well. If we've got aggressive panhandling, there is something we can do about that. But it's a wide-ranging issue, and a lot of things need to happen, and we're gonna take that on very soon.
Okay. Okay, Arthur Petracelli, you would have 60 seconds.
60 seconds for what?
To rebut on the panhandling question.
The panhandling you can't do a thing about. That's the right of the people. You can panhandle anywhere you want in the world, in the United States. The Bill of Rights says that. Anybody ever look at the Bill of Rights, the rights of the people? Anything the city, or the state, or the government, what gimmick they come up with, the Bill of Rights trumps everything. Read it, look at it. Everybody's entitled to a trial by a jury, everybody! And the courts will tell you, "No." But you're entitled to a jury trial. If it's civil, it's six people; if it's criminal, it's 12. They're wasting their time with that. Why don't they pay attention to how much they squirt away all the time? Our money, our hard-earned money, they waste.
Okay. All right, so the next question is going to go to Dan Zabrowski, and actually...
Did Ernestine get a chance to mention?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I cut Ernestine out? I'm sorry. No, we started with Ernestine.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you, right. Yes, okay, so like I said, I finally got one right. The next question would go to Dan Zabrowski, and actually, I'm gonna ask it, if that's okay. Okay. Okay, many downtown, this, this comes from the Chamber of Commerce. Many downtown structures are old and require investment to allow potential tenants to operate a business. Do you support an incentive fund to offset, offset tenants to move here and stay here?
As many people do not know, the east side of Meriden was given incentives, 10%. Nothing was ever addressed to the west side. And again, incentives are the greatest thing in the world. As you know, we do have low-income housing down there, yes. Some people cannot afford to participate in a restaurant that, you know, it's gonna cost a few extra dollars, but the businesses that are small, we have a lot of them now, we just turned over the old Cassidy's Diner, there's an incentive right there that they can use on the west side, got a couple other places. The old Dunkin' Donuts gives somebody an incentive to go in there. Incentives work, and if they don't work, then we're, we're lost in Meriden. But again, if we don't give that incentive, we don't sit back and say, "Well, here, we're opening the door for you, please come." And I look at just basically what is on the west side. We don't really have that much. They gave a great incentive to the Ragazzino family to open up another part of their business, and they sold it. They made some money, but it's still on our tax rolls. And this is one of the things I say, as far as our buildings are concerned, keep them on the tax rolls. And hopefully, we look in the future and say, "We did something right, we did something that we can offset our tax in the city of Meriden so we don't get tax increases." Thank you.
Incentives are critical. I mean, you know, every town is vying for the same businesses the city of Meriden is, so incentives are critical. They're critical throughout the city of Meriden, not just in the downtown area. I think as long as there's some kind of a guarantee that whatever that incentive happens to be, there's a return on investment back to the citizens in the city of Meriden, I'm all for incentives throughout the city of Meriden.
I would agree, and I also think that incentives work, as they've shown across the city in different areas where we've used them. And I think if we were to analyze the situation and there was enough support on that, I would, I would move forward with an incentive to improve the buildings in the downtown and west side.
Thank you. Empty buildings generate nothing for us but trouble. Not only do we not get money for them, but we wind up having to maintain them or try to keep them from falling down, and they're a major blight on our community. So we need to look at any avenue that's gonna get us going with people taking over new, old buildings. As we all know, old buildings are a problem. First of all, you don't know what you're gonna run into when you take it on. There's asbestos, there's lead, there's all kinds of issues that developers have to deal with when they take it on. So, we've seen around the country that incentives do work in communities, they do get investors involved because they need a helping hand or they're not gonna, they're not gonna step up to do that. So I fully support that, and it's a combination, not only of city, but certainly of state funds as well.
Okay, Arthur Petracelli, you have 60 seconds.
What do you want now?
Well, the question was, the question was, on business incentives, "Many downtown structures are old and require investment to allow potential tenants. Do you support an incentive fund to offset tenants to move and stay here?"
First of all, in Meriden, these people, they ripped down all these beautiful buildings years ago, okay? And they make it so difficult for a person that wants to come into this town to open up a business. It costs them so much money for an architect, for all kinds of things. By the time, by the time they possibly opened, it probably, it probably cost them $40,000 or $50,000 just to go through all the crap that the city demands. Look at Wallingford. Look at all the businesses, all the way down, from the Meriden line all the way down, all the way down to the other side of Wallingford, on Route 5, I think. This town, these people...
Okay, that's time. Time.
I said it earlier, incentives, okay, but do we have to give away the whole city? 80%. So that means that we only get 20% back. That's the Meriden project that where we rebuild the mills. And have anybody seen those buildings? They're really thin, and they're already flooding. I think that we've taken on projects that's unnecessary, I think that we gave incentives to people to finish everything early, and it don't work. Look downtown, that beautiful green that we built, where the, where the grass died.
Let her, let her talk, let her talk.
Where the grass died.
Please.
The grass needs water. So, we need to take a look at that. These are things that we need to say, "Well, we're spending our money on, are we spending it properly?" When we did the schools, we gave them incentives, but they didn't have any grass. So who do we blame for that? City council.
Okay, time. Okay, the next question will be for Bob Williams.
Yes, Mr. Williams, I've gotten a few letters to the editor about this one. You are in the midst of serving a four-year term as an area representative, and you're running at-large now, so I'm just wondering what the intent and what the motivation is here.
I'm surprised you posed that question to me. What's the intent? Well, let me back up a minute. Walt Shamrock approached me at the 12th hour and asked me to run. And quite frankly, we didn't have anybody else that had an interest. So regardless of what people do believe or don't believe, I, it's their opinion. So a big part of what I'm doing is a personal favorite, Walt. The intent is to do what I've done historically, is to listen to the people, react to their needs, and just be as upfront as I can with them. to listen to the people, react to their needs, and just be as upfront as I can with anything I do and I say. I get calls from representatives, citizens, and businesses throughout the city of Meriden. So when I first got on the council, an interesting point with one of the senior counselors, I got a call from someone outside Area 4. And I asked this individual, I said, "What should I do?" And he said, "Wait a minute. They called you." He said, "So you do what you got to do." My thought, do I give it to someone else in a particular area? So all I could tell you is I'm doing what I, I don't think, certainly, there's nothing wrong with what I'm doing. Other people may have a difference of opinion. But I've talked to a lot of people around me, a lot of people I respect. So I'm going to continue to try to do what I can regardless of what my tenure is in representing the citizens throughout the city of Meriden.
Well, it's legal. It's, so I have no, you know, legal contentions with what Council Williams is doing. And I'll just let the voters decide on whether his reasons for running are something they want to get behind. Thank you.
We the people don't own that seat. Sounds like there's a seat and they're going to pass it on to their, their friend. That's not how democracy works. That works maybe in some other country. But each seat is up for grabs, whoever wants to run for it. So that'd be number one. Number two, this is an election where voters decide. And it's not a selection where someone handpicks someone to sit in that seat. So that's the problem I have with it. It's legal, never been done before like this. There's never in the history of Meriden had a sitting city councilperson run for a seat that they already had and then could give it to someone else. So those are my issues with it. Whatever happens, happens. The voters will decide.
Okay, Arthur Petroselli.
I'm not going to comment about who positions. Do I have to?
No.
Okay. A lot of money, a lot of money goes...
Okay, you can use your time, though. He can use his 60 seconds. Go ahead.
A lot of this money goes, you taxpayers. The teachers, they get $75,000 benefits and a pension, and they put in 180 days, okay? And they have probably 63 secretaries over in the board event. Nobody's watching the bankroll here. Nobody, except a few people. They're robbing us blind. They're raping us. But it's been that way in Meriden for 40 years. Republic, the Democrats, they're nothing but a bunch of crooks. Look at the cesspool in Hartford.
Okay, that's time.
Okay.
Do I think what happened was fair? No. But the people will decide. That's what's so beautiful about our democracy, is that the people get to vote and decide what they want. And that's what will happen. But I'll use my time also to talk about, my issue is the water. You can't drink the water here. They're pouring chlorine in it. It may kill your pet. Hey, it may kill you. They sent out these letters saying that if you have high blood pressure, you need to see your doctor. So that means the taxpayer are paying more money for some water they can't drink. And then you got to pay your doctor because you try to drink the water or you try to boil it with your salt. I think that if we took more time and stopped bonding and focused on the water, make it decent for us, people will come. Hell, I would move to a place that had good water. So I...
Okay, that's time. All right, Dan, you have 60 seconds.
Again, I was endorsed by the Republican Party as well, the We the People Party. So I'm not going to get into it. But I just wanted to elaborate on something so all you people can hear this one, because I couldn't get this one in before.
The daily fine. These people may be millionaires and could care less about our $100 a day fine or whatever it is. What would be the next step in that for the city to fix that issue? Can you take it from them? Would you want to take it from them? You know?
I've joked with people about this, saying, "You bring the biggest bulldozer you can. You set it up outside that building, and you put the timer on, okay? And you tell people that this thing isn't squared away in this amount of time, that bulldozer's going to start up and go right through there to the green."
Now, this is called economic development. Guess what? It isn't. Those buildings can be refurbished. I've yet to see how many people come to the POCD meetings and state on there like I have. Let's refurbish these buildings or retrofit them.
Okay. All right. So the next question is going to go to Michael Cardona, who will have 90 seconds to respond, and then everybody else will have 60 seconds to respond.
It's been almost two years since the city council decided to fire Guy Scaife, former city manager before his contract expired. Knowing everything you know now, in hindsight, was it a mistake? Or did the council make any mistakes in firing Scaife? And how much of a black cloud has Scaife's firing and subsequent lawsuit been over the city?
Look, I think unfortunately, many unsubstantiated claims have been made on this topic. And unfortunately, we're not allowed to comment on them, as this is a matter of pending litigation. So there's not much else I can say on the topic.
Okay. Pending litigation, we can't comment. Okay. Arthur Petroselli? Okay, let him go. Did you want to comment, Arthur?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Okay.
The point is, Scaife was a pretty good guy, okay? Nobody sees it TV anymore. Channel 14. They don't have the council meetings on. Coon, he grabs 3,300 a week. And I tell him all the time. And he doesn't do a thing about it, just like Rhodey years ago. He had, he had the TV shut off for two years. Nobody saw the council meetings. We're paying for this stuff. Not Coon. He gets big money. He doesn't want it on TV. That's the problem. The problem is, not these people, it's the people. They don't vote. They don't come out and throw these people out and try some noise.
Okay, that's time.
Now, my opinion on Guy Scaife, I think the city council didn't do their job. They didn't vet him correctly. We paid $20,000 to have him vetted. And nobody saw something that if you Googled his name, you knew that he was already in trouble. It seems like Meriden likes to hire people that nobody else wants. So I did a little investigation. I went to Rocky Hill and asked them why they let him go. And what they said was, "We gave him an incentive," which is the favorite word of the people in the city council, "either he leave or we fire him." So they, they let him go and we hired him. He didn't like children because I asked him about the basketball tournaments and stuff like that for children. He said it wasn't a priority for him. Now, did he uncover some things? Absolutely. And I can't wait to see what the rest of it is.
Okay.
Going back to that with Mr. Scaife, sad part is, and I'll give you the figure, and Mr. Curz can concur, we are 154,375,000 dollars in debt. And what are we doing with the city council? We are spending, spending, spending. The albatross they went up, put up on the golf course, sorry. Bottom line is, yes, hangers are going to make money. But we are definitely doing one justice to the people in the city of Meriden. We have not given our seniors the respect that they need. They need a senior citizen center. We have a building on Cook Avenue. They can refurbish. These people can go down there and they can build up, and people can get apartments up there at a low rate. But what are we doing? Spending money. I said, "Stop your spending. I do it in my own household. If I can't go any further, then we don't buy it." Sorry. Thank you.
Did the council make a mistake? I'm not going to speak for anybody but Bob Williams. I could tell you during, prior to his dismissal, firing, call it what you will, we had granted Mr. Scaife a pay increase. Shortly thereafter, he was dismissed without cause, and the only thing I could say is that I voted against it.
Okay. So then, the next question will be for Mike Rhodey, and he'll have 90 seconds.
Mike, pretty soon, as in, within the next year, the police chief will be leaving, which means that if you're a counselor, if you're serving on the council, then you will be tasked with selecting a replacement. What will you be looking for? How do you, how do you see that process unfolding?
In any community, the chief of police is one of the most important positions we have. It's number one, public safety, which I think is first on everyone's mind. And we want someone who's going to get the job done. I've looked at community policing around the country. New Haven was the first one to do it, and we eventually went to the community policing model, which I strongly support. We need a chief of police who's, who's active, who's out in the community, who's transparent, someone who can, who can build trust and maintain trust with our community, especially when difficult situations happen. We need to be able to trust that person. I would expect to have the community involved in deciding what qualifications and what qualities we want to have from the chief. And we would be listening to them as well, because this, this is a community decision. Certainly, the final decision is the city council. I spent 14 years on the public safety committee. So I know full well what the police department deals with, what the challenges are, and what the issues are. And I would hope to be on that committee to help make a good decision about that position.
Okay. Arthur Petroselli, you have one minute.
As far as the police, police chief goes, I don't need that. The police chief, they could get one right in the ranks. They could put him on tomorrow. But this Cosette, Coon's buddy is Cosette. Cosette's grabbing a pay and he's grabbing a pension. Lupkus, he's grabbing a pay and he's grabbing a pension. And he's, quite a few others. Lupkus was the architect of this plan. They should have let all that people go, hire these new people at half the rate. You can't imagine what they get paid in, in the city of Meriden for doing not much of anything.
Okay, time. Sorry.
I think that it should be someone that's active, transparent. And I also think that we should hire in the ranks. When you hire somebody that's already in the police department, they already know what needs to be done. That's why I can't understand that they didn't know that he was going to retire and needed a replacement. But if you had done your homework and hired one from within, we wouldn't be where we are now. But I also want to say this. When electing a new police chief, and you've got old politicians that's been here forever, saying the same thing over and over and over again, "This is what we should do." They haven't done. So you just need some new blood in so we could get a fresh, new set of eyes. So when we do hire somebody, it'll be a different perspective, because the old perspective just don't work. So if you've got the same people doing the same thing, that's called insanity. And that's why we in the middle of the mess that we in now.
And again, as far as the police chief is concerned, he should be a resident of the city of Meriden. They forced the chief of the fire department to buy a house in Meriden, as they did Guy Scaife when he came in here. Part of this whole objective is to get someone that's going to sit here when we go to meetings and be able to tell us the same thing. And maybe his house will get broken into, we'll get a little more police out, out in the streets. But it's a sad thing that you only forced one person, actually two, the past manager and the fire chief. This person should be part of the solution, not the problem. When they're out of the city, guess what? And also, our deputy chief lives out of Meriden. So again, a lot of guys that leave Meriden, they go into service, they get a job, it's either Army, Police, Air Force, or whatever. They come back here, they're not given a priority. And this is, these are the people that could step up in the ranks and be a betterment to the city of Meriden.
Yeah, there were two parts to that question. One is the process. I was involved in the interview process for the fire chief, and I could tell you, they had a very good blend of people from out the, throughout the community. We had community leaders, we had a few counselors, and we had citizens. So I think we've got a very good process in place. And we made a very good selection with Chief Morgan. What do we want to see? Listen, I think we just need somebody that's more visible, that's out there in the public. Maybe part of what needs to happen with our command staff or the police department is for, maybe they do quarterly meetings with the public. And maybe it's a forum like this or at the library. And it's the command staff that's there, and it's respectable Q and A answers and questions from the public. I think that would probably be a, an idea that we'd all embrace.
In terms of the process for selecting the next chief, I will be presenting a resolution to the council for a community-based search committee similar to the one that we had with the city manager. In terms of the qualities, I think you're going to need to find someone with extensive experience. And I'd like to see a person that embraces diversity, both cultural and economic. I don't want to see someone that sees that as an annoyance or something that they just have to deal with. I want someone who's going to stand up for police officers, given all the negative publicity that they deal with, when they are in the right, and not, they will not hesitate to hold them accountable when they're working outside of policy or the law. Obviously, characteristics such as honesty, integrity, and humility are critical. And as everybody said, transparency, someone that's forward-thinking and open-minded.
Okay. All right. We said we would wrap this up at 8:30, which is in about 10 minutes. So I don't think I'm going to have time to go down and get through a round of questions. So what I was thinking we could do, if the candidates are okay with that, we could do closing statements. And we'll give you guys two minutes each in a closing statement. Does that sound okay?
No.
Well, okay. Well, how would you like to do it?
Just finish it the way you're...
Well, no, we're only going till 8:30. So I said I would go through one round of questions.
There's another half an hour.
Well, no, it's not. It's 8:20.
So what?
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that we, so we're going to start with Arthur Petroselli, and you will have a grand total of two minutes.
New people, a lot of new people should come to the meetings, the council meetings. The first Monday and the third Monday of every month, they start at 6:30. Come up there and open your mouths. But I believe people on the planet, the majority of them, they don't want to get involved. They let some people, like myself and a few others, open their big mouths. A lot of you people laugh at me, but let me tell you something. I know what I'm talking about. I don't cheat people and I don't lie to people. But most of these people, they run for office, they're only in it to benefit themselves and their friends. They couldn't care less about their taxpayers. DC, Hartford, Meriden, the Trumpster calls them the SWAT. They're not the SWAT. They're the cesspools, the cesspools of the world. And the people spoke when Trump got elected. And boy, were people... And boy, were people... They didn't believe it. And he's gonna get elected again. And maybe you people will vote a lot of these people out, maybe you won't. This town, this town has been democratic for over 40 years. And all these pensions that they gave people all over the country, they could reopen all these contracts 40 years ago and renegotiate them. It's our money that we're... They're getting.
Okay, that's time. Ernestine Holloway.
I'm gonna say this. I agree with Arthur. I agree that we need to renegotiate. I believe that the people of Meriden need to come together and open that charter. I think we need to redo it. I also think that we need to get rid of career politicians. They've been here so long, doing the same thing, expecting different results. I think that we need to hold Meriden Housing Authority accountable, find out what they're doing with the money that we give them. And if they're using the city services, they should pay for it. I have a problem when we charge the Humane Society so much money and we charge Rushford only a dollar. I think that it needs to be even. No one is better than the other one. They both offer a service. I think we need to go back to the library and tell them, "No, you don't deserve all that money." I also think that... I also think that the taxpayers play a part in this. I think that if you paid attention and stopped voting party and vote character, you would have some good people. And if they're in office for six years and they're not doing good, why you keep putting them back in there? That's what I don't understand. You know, they said, "What we gonna get if you're mayor? You gonna get the truth. I'm gonna tell you what you don't wanna hear, I'm gonna tell you what you wanna hear, and I'm gonna tell you the blatant truth. I'm not in the bed with anybody." I'm in... What I wanna do is better the city, so our children can have a better city when we're gone. Because if we keep going the rate that we're going now, our children are gonna live in tents, 'cause they won't be able to afford anything. So what I'm saying is vote for change. And I am about change.
My challenge, and I just sit back and shake my head, because I'm gonna go with it. But again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. You can see basically why we need you to come to council meetings, 'cause you'd all be wearing depend garments, 'cause you'd make them, whatever. But thank you to the Record Journal, and again, you know, putting this on and putting things in... Out here so we can go there. And I'd like to thank the voters that will vote for me in advance, because again, I'm gonna make some noise up there. And the noise is, I am a taxpayer, as well as each and everybody else here in this room. But the biggest person that I really wanna fight for is our businesses, 'cause we can't keep putting taxes on our businesses, 'cause they're gonna leave. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. And again, as far as our seniors, we need to take care of them. These are our forefathers of our city. These are the people that made Meriden. They are not... They don't get kids in school anymore. But again, education is very important. Education as well as public safety. Public safety is one of the things that we definitely have to take care of in the city of Meriden and educate our kids, even through the schools. But one of the things I wanna touch on is our attendance and guards to our counselors. A lot of counselors don't show up for meetings. There's votes there that they possibly could've swayed a vote or whatever. Some are committee meetings. Look at them. Go on-site, on-demand in the city of Meriden, and you will see how many committees have held meetings and how many have not shown up or canceled. That's a sad state of affair. That's one of the reasons why I go to the Public Safety Committee. I'm able to speak my piece. And everybody else that has a problem with anything due to public safety, the chief of police is there, the fire chief is there, Hunter's is there, and emergency responder, she's there. And these people will ask, answer your questions. And this is one of the things, we have transparency with them. Thank you.
Again, thank you, folks, for coming out. You certainly could be home enjoying yourself and watching this on TV in the next few days. But thank you. I'm honored to have served respectfully over the last nine years. It's just been a great experience. I've met a lot of great people from all walks of life. I have a lot of friends on the other side of the aisle. I call friends as far as the Democrats, Republicans. It's gotta be a "we" thing. And that's why "We the People" attracted me, because we have folks from all walks of life as part of the party, who are both active and inactive. And that's what I think it should all be about. The biggest thing I'd like to reiterate or hopefully enforce, again, I've been very unsuccessful in doing it, referendum. And when I talk about that, I'm gonna refer to the schools. You know, it was a big expenditure in the city's history, $220 million. I felt that should've went out to the public for referendum. You people should've decided how we spent that block of money. Again, the biggest expenditure in the city's history. There's some controversy about the library right now. Again, why can't that go out? And you folks decide on those big-ticket items. That's what you're here for, and I think that's where you should have a bigger voice. People say we have meetings, you have a chance to voice your opinion, yes and no. But I feel that's critical, and that's where you should have a voice on, again, the big-ticket items. I've worked honestly. What you see is what you get. There's no fluff, there's no BS. I would honor your vote, and I hope you vote for "We the People" come this election. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I wanna thank you all for coming to this forum today. I also wanna thank the Record Journal for putting this forum together, and for the Board of Education for allowing us to use this building. It's been an honor to serve the residents of Meriden for the past four years, as a city counselor, deputy mayor, and the chair of public safety for the past two years. Prior to this, I proudly served in the Meriden Board of Education. I'm a Meriden native who decided to raise my family with my wife Liz in this same great city. Although there are still several challenges to overcome, I would like to mention some accomplishments as well as some goals moving forward. In terms of accomplishments, I believe the East Main Street Tax Initiative Plan has spurred businesses such as JD Ryder, FW Webb, Daieno, and Huxley's Restaurants. We've lowered the mill rate, and throughout my first term, we've consistently passed bipartisan budgets. We've also locked in developers for One King Place, the old hospital, with the goal to begin construction next year. Moving forward, I would support a more aggressive schedule of road paving with a long-term goal of getting on pace. I would also like to address the panhandling issue, specifically in high-traffic areas and intersections, and to continue working with nonprofits to address this issue. In order to take on these goals, I respectfully ask for your vote this November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. I also like to thank you all for coming out tonight. It's not a World Series game, thank God. But I appreciate people coming up and listening to what we have to say and getting back to us about how they feel about it. Thank you to Record Journal, Rockdale Middle School, and those who made this possible. 25 years ago, I was reading an article in the Record Journal. And they used to tell what happened 50 years ago, 100 years ago. You may remember that. It was in the language of the day. And it was kinda fun to listen to how they described things. And there was a quote in there from a councilman in 1890. And the councilman said this, "Meriden has a huge downtown flooding problem. They should do something about it, but they probably never will." That was 1890. Fast forward 100 years, and he was so true. Seven major storms, multimillion dollars worth of damage, and we were left with a toxic waste dump of 14 acres in the center of our community. So I said, "I'm gonna do something about it." And I put a resolution that fixed the flood problem. It's the only name on it. They thought I was crazy. Too much money, too complicated, seven tries, we couldn't fix it. Well, we did. Look at what we have today. Flood control is the linchpin of everything good happening in Meriden. Why? Because that gave us the Meriden Green, the amphitheater. It allowed us to tear down the mills. It allowed the new buildings to go up. It allowed the new train station downtown, all because we kept downtown dry. And we took about 200 people out of the flood zone in the process. I'm committed to this community. I've lived here most of my adult life. I've been in politics for many of those years. And I've tried to make this place a better place to live and to grow our family. My dad said to me as a youth, "Try to make a place better than you found it." And I've really tried to do that all these years. And I hope you give me your vote, and I'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Very good. You can clap. You can clap. Okay. So that concludes the forum. I wanna thank all the candidates who participated, Matt Zabrick and Jeff Kers for asking the questions, the Board of Education for the building, you all for coming. Thank you. Good night.